On and off. There is not. Yeah. Uh, okay. Just work, work, I want to let you know. Went ahead and, uh, our engineering firm is going to make one of the right amount. They, uh, have that as well as the, uh, for recent action. You know. You're important to me now. Most of them have that. Uh, you. Uh. But then. I don't know. Y'all have something.
Good evening, everyone. Good evening, council members and to all of our viewers that are with us tonight. I'd like to call the work session on Wednesday, December 2nd, 2020 to order with our first agenda item being ordinance number 1964. Kim Rao, can you please present the amendments? Can I ask the council members to please turn their cameras on?
Madam President, I'm sharing my screen right now, so you will see the body of ordinance number 1964.
Yes.
It is the ordinance amending the Laurel Election Code. So I'm going to go through each page so that we can highlight the changes that have occurred since the introduction of this legislation. So the first change is on page, on page three, and you'll see that we've added 26, and it provides for mail-in ballot or vote by mail. The process whereby voters make application for and submit completed ballots by either mail or in-person drop-off at locations authorized by the Board of Election Supervisors. Okay, the next change that we have is on page six. And you'll see it's highlighted, number 12, provide guidelines for the use of mail-in ballots or vote by mail.
Kim, Kim, you'll lock back up on, on page seven.
Page seven.
There.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. You'll see here too, at the end of this paragraph.
May I interrupt a minute, Kim? Do you want to like, ask the council members, do they got any question about the other pages? Even though we corrected some things, but they might see something on some pages that, you know, one through seven, they might make one, make some changes on it.
We were actually going to save that to the end, the questions to the end.
Okay, no problem, sorry.
No problem.
You'll see here at the bottom of this section that we're adding the mayor shall administer the oath of office to all election officials prior to any city election. Okay, now we come to section 6 dash 25. And that's on page 16. And it's under the appointment of campaign treasurer, and we're just changing it to say a campaign treasurer shall be a resident of Maryland. We're striking the city. It was originally proposed as the treasurer having to be a resident of the city. And then we are adding no candidate's family member shall be appointed to serve as a treasurer. It did state family, and then we added member to that section. You'll see in section 6 dash 27, we're just adding dispersed by him or her. That's on page 16. Then you go to page 17, anonymous contributions. And you'll see here that we're taking out treasurer and adding city finance officer. So the line would read, any anonymous contributions would go to the city finance officer. The city finance officer of the city who shall donate the funds to a nonprofit organization in the city limits. That's currently how we, how the law is written. So then we go down to section 630, limits of contribution. And here we have set the contribution at $4,000 for any one person to be able to contribute in a city election. And we're striking that last line, it shall be unlawful for any partisan political organization, nonprofit or profit-making corporation or other business entity to contribute money. We're striking that on that section. You'll see on page 19, section 6 dash 34, maintenance of reports. We're adding submitted reports shall be posted on the city website for general, for the general public to review. And as you all know, we currently do that. Madam President, that completes the amendments to ordinance number 1964.
Okay. Um, so, Keith, you can start us off if you have any comments regarding the ordinance 1964. Councilmember Signor?
Get there, trying to get there.
Oh, okay.
Can you hear me? Yeah, I don't have any, um, any comments to add to this amendment right now. I was just suggesting that, you know, since we started with the pages that we made changes on, any other council members had anything from page one to page 23 that they want to see change that's not in the, that we made changes on so far. That's all I have.
Madam President?
Yes.
If I could just add that the amendments being presented today were a combination of meetings with the administration and council member Sidnor, taking into consideration some of the other comments that had been made. But if any council member has made comments or wants to see something else added, they, if they could just send us an email to do that. Because at the next meeting on Monday, November the 14th, we will be reading the changes into the record. And it is going to also be suggested that we hold this legislation until January 2021 before we take final action.
Yes. Okay. Councilman Lance, do you have any comments?
I, I do, Madam President. Let me just, I appreciate the changes, but I don't have this copy that Kim just showed. Okay, so I'll ask Ms. Rao to send that along to me with the, with the highlighted changes. Then I can print it out and I can make better sense of it. But there is, uh, there, there's two other issues. On page 17 where we talk about the nonprofit, I think we need to add with an address within the city. Okay, it's always where they get their tax returns sent, or their, their address of record that is the address of record for a nonprofit. That's just number one. The second thing is, I know that we had, uh, our attorney Marcus had looked at some, some of the work that was done previously. I would only like the prior, uh, you know, we're going to hold this till January, maybe have Marcus take a look at these changes and make sure he's, uh, he's good with these changes.
Madam President?
Yes.
I did neglect to say that that was the plan.
Okay.
He is being provided with a copy of this, as is the Board of Elections, because there have been a couple of things changed that they have not seen yet since they reviewed it and made their recommendations. So that will all happen before the, before January of 2021.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you.
Okay, that's it for me, Madam President.
Okay, Councilman DeWalt, do you have any comments?
Uh, no questions or comments.
Okay, Councilman Smith?
Thank you, Madam President. Um, just on the, the contribution amount, I was, I, I thought it would be smart of us to actually copy the same limits as the state. Not that it would honestly conflict me in, in running, but I mean, just to have the, I feel the limits probably should be the 6,000 mark that it is at the state level. Um, and also that's on section 630. And, um, also the vote by mail. Uh, I wanted to try to see if we could come to a consensus, a consensus on pushing the ballots to be mailed to all registered residents.
Madam President?
Get the application on process.
Yes, ma'am.
The mail-in voting is provided for in the charter resolution that we'll be discussing after this.
Okay. Okay, so save your question
Okay.
to Councilman Smith when we get to that part, but I've got note, I've noted that, okay?
Thank you, Madam President.
Okay.
Madam President, if I may?
Yes, sir.
The task force that we appointed on mail-out ballots as well as coming up with a game plan in case it's needed for next year, that report will come back to the mayor and city council. I've asked them to come back with their recommendations by December the 31st. So you'll, it's already being looked at by the Board of Election Supervisors and two, two residents that we've appointed as at-large member.
Okay, thank you so much. Okay. This agenda item is scheduled for a public hearing at the next mayor and city council meeting on Monday, December 14th, 2020 at 6:00 PM. We will hold this legislation until January 2021 before we take action. Moving to the next agenda item is Charter Resolution Number 172, a resolution amending the charter of the City of Laurel election laws. Kim, can you please present your amendments?
Madam President, before you is the body of the Charter Amendment, Article 600. We will go page by page with this document as well.
Okay. The floor is yours.
We added B, the individual's name does not appear on a city election register of voters or an election official asserts that the individual is not eligible to vote. And this has to do with provisional ballots.
Madam President, Kim, you may want to bring that up. You still got the old one on there, on the screen.
The old, the, okay, one moment.
You have the other word and it's up still.
Okay. Okay, let me start sharing again. Okay, we are now, can you now see Charter Resolution 172?
Yes.
Okay. The first change had to do with provisional ballots, and it was just adding that the individual's name does not appear on the city's election register of list of voters or an election official asserts that the individual is not eligible to vote. These are just the reasons that a person would be issued a provisional ballot instead of a regular ballot. Are, we currently don't have any provisions in the code or the charter to provide for provisional voting, although the, we have, our Board of Elections has provided that process for several years now. So it is now just being put into law.
Okay.
So what we're doing also under section 6 dash 606 on page six, we're providing for same-day registration. And as you'll see, the City of Laurel Board of Election Supervisors shall allow for same-day registrations for residents that live in the City of Laurel corporate boundaries. Those wishing to exercise their right to same-day registration shall adhere to the following. They'll have to bring documentation showing proof of residency, a Maryland driver's license, identification card, or something with the current address on it, pay stub, bank statement, or utility bill. The election judges would be the ones making the determination if they are qualified to register to vote that day. They would provide, be provided the forms. We would follow the same process as the county does. The next section, section is section 607, vote by mail. And as you'll see here, it provides for the vote by mail, and the Board of Election Supervisors will be the ones to outline and the process for the mail-in voting, vote by mail. But we are including and allowing for it in our charter.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, and then we are just renumbering the sections as you go through the rest of the document.
Okay.
Madam President, I believe those are all the changes that we will be presenting.
Okay. Uh, we'll start off with Councilman Smith. Do you have any questions or comments?
Oh, thank you, Madam President. No, my only comment was, was still about the, uh, about the mail-in ballots, but, uh, Mayor Mo addressed that, saying that the election board would be coming with recommendations, so I'm, I'm fine with that. Is, uh, I did speak on the, I did speak on, which is it? Sorry, excuse me. I spoke on the ballot. No, that's, that's it. Thank you.
Okay, Councilman DeWalt?
Um, just one thing on the same-day registration. When, when this is presented in front of the election board and the, uh, the head of the election board and everything, could we get some sort of, my concern is the, uh, the time limit it's going to take to get all this information that this person presents. How, how long it's going to take, especially during the time, during the election where it's very, very busy in there. And I've, I've, you know, we've seen, we've seen, uh, elections where they come in, the voters come in certain, uh, times where it gets very, very hectic in there. And are we gonna, are we gonna be providing, uh, you know, an extra person in there or a couple of extra people or, um, what? You know, the information that they need, uh, what's the estimated time that that's going to take? And is it going to slow up? Uh, is it going to be separate from everybody else that's coming in there just to cast their ballot? Uh, and will it, will it cause a delay or will it cause, um, how much time it's gonna, is going to be involved with it? And I'd like to, you know, hear from the election judges and the head of the election board on if, if it's going to burden them down and how much it would burn them. Maybe it won't, maybe they have it figured out or whatever. But that's the only thing, issue as far as the same-day, uh, registration that I have. Thank you, Madam, uh, Madam President.
Thank you. Um, Councilman Signor?
No questions or comments?
Okay. This agenda item is scheduled for a public hearing at the next mayor and city council meeting on Monday, December 14th, 2020 at 6:00 PM. Yes, sir.
You skipped me. That's okay.
Oh, I skipped you. I'm sorry. I'm sorry, Councilman Lance.
So, so, uh, to some extent, I agree, uh, with, uh, the, the councilman's concern about the time requirement. Uh, what, what I've noticed around the country where they've got same-day registration, you have to add additional staff. And we need to have our board just recognize that and make provision, especially if we're dealing with two voting places, which I assume we're going to continue with. That brings me to section 606 and provisional ballots. Does that mean that it will be the chief judge in that place of voting that will make that decision? I'll just ask that, not looking for the answer tonight. Uh, and the last thing is, or two last things. Ms. Rao, I didn't receive a copy with all these changes indicated tonight, so I assume you'll send me that, so I can get the one with the reds and the yellow highlights. Uh, and, uh, since we're going to push this into January, uh, this given opportunity for our legal counsel, uh, Mr. Marcus, to, to comment on these changes. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. I'm so sorry I skipped over you initially.
Madam President?
Yes.
If I may add that there are a few new sections too, that the Board of Election Supervisors has not seen this. This is one of the sections that I was referring to. So Mr. Marcus and our Board of Elections will be provided with the up, the updated copies for their comments tomorrow.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. This agenda item is scheduled for a public hearing at the next mayor and city council meeting on Monday, December 14th, 2020 at 6:00 PM. We will hold this legislation until January 2020 before we take action. Our next agenda item is Charter Resolution Number 173, Charter Resolution to amend the Charter of the City of Laurel, Maryland by amending Article 400 Administration and specifically amending Section 401, City Administrator, amending Section 403 Deputy City Administrator, amending Section 410 Director of Budget and Personnel Services, amending Section 440 Police Chief, adding new Section 467 Director of the Department of Communications, and adding new Section 468 Director of the Department of Information Technology, Chief Information Officer. Does any of the council members have any questions?
Madam President, I could take a stab, uh, just to let everybody know if you'd like.
Okay.
Uh, this is, uh, reason we put this in, we have, when we joined COG and the other groups, council governments, they refer to them, uh, these new titles. We want to make sure, as we've done before, that we're on parity with, um, our counterparts in other municipalities and other county governments. Um, we've added the CIO, the Chief Administrative Officer. Uh, we have changed through, um, the salary is determined by the mayor, uh, by the mayor through the city's adopted operating budget. That is, uh, pretty much all the same. The wording has changes a bit. We did not have anything in here for the Department of Communication, so we added that to clarify. And then as well as the Department of Information Technology, uh, we've added. So, uh, I'll answer any questions that anybody may have.
Okay.
Thank you, Madam President.
Mm-hmm. Does any of the council members have questions? Okay. Into, introduction and first public hearing at the, at the next mayor council meeting on Monday, December 14th, 2020 at 6:00 PM. Moving to our next agenda item is ordinance number 1965, an ordinance to re, to amend the general operating budget and capital improvement program of the mayor and city council of Laurel, Maryland for the fiscal year July 1st, 2020 through June 30th, 2021. Michelle Saylor, do you have any thing to add?
Good evening, Madam President, members of the city council and Mayor Mo. So this is our second amendment to the FY21 operating budget. I can just, um, take you down the numbers, um, beginning on the first page. Uh, if you recall, when you adopted FY21 budget, uh, we had a $250,000 contingency placed in the city administrator's budget. And this was for any, uh, budgetary issues we knew we would face because of the COVID, um, issue. So at this point in time, what I need to do is, um, utilize those funds by reducing the admissions and amusement revenue, which is that negative 250,000 on the first page. And it has a corresponding decrease in the city administrator's budget to utilize that whole contingency. The reason for this is, uh, in the first quarter of FY20, our revenue for admissions and amusements was over $146,000. Uh, the first quarter of FY21, uh, we're at $17,065. So, uh, we're pretty confident at this point with no change in sight for the movie theaters, um, that we want to go ahead and make this change so that we've taken care of uh, what we project as that issue with the revenue.
Okay.
Um, further down, uh, under the 250,000 negative is an addition of 183,712. Um, at the point that I put together this amendment on the 23rd of November, that's what we had received from the county for our CARES Act reimbursement requests. Of course, this is always a moving target, uh, which is a good problem to have, but today we received uh, another installment of $216,758. So that's a total of 400,470. Um, and what I will do is to provide Ms. Rao, both for meeting on the 14th, um, a revised ordinance that will include the, um, the other 216,000. The offset to this addition is in the expenditure budget of the Office of Emergency Management. Because of the expenditures that we've made for PPE, sanitizing supplies, improvements to the HVAC system, um, and the other, uh, improvements to the building, to all the buildings, the thermal scanners, as you've been made aware. So this is helping to offset. We've made another, uh, two reimbursement requests over the last week, so the money is still due to come in. And we'll address it uh, in, in subsequent ordinances. Uh, but we just wanted to make you aware and go ahead and, and move along with, with the money that we have in hand right now.
Okay.
Okay, so, um, at the top of page two, you have an amount, it was actually at that point a net decrease, but, um, the budget will increase by 150,470. And like I said, I'll get you a revised ordinance before the meeting. Well, before. And like I said, I'll get you a revised ordinance before the meeting, well, before the meeting on the fourteenth. In the expenditure section, you'll see the negative three hundred and forty-nine thousand sixty-five dollars. Again, that's the reduction of the two hundred and fifty thousand dollar contingency from the City Administrator's office as well as the change, um, due to the reorganization of the City Administrator's office. The risk manager was moved to my office. And so, we're transferring the salary and, and benefits from that budget to um, the Department of Budget and Personnel Services. The next several decreases that you'll see throughout the uh, Parks and Recreation Maintenance budgets, those funds are being transferred into the Office of Emergency Management. It's a total of twenty-five thousand dollars. And this will be used um, as a startup for continued P P E and sanitizing expenditures, um, additional equipment that we will be able to receive a seventy-five percent reimbursement through FEMA's Public Assistance Grant Program. We're transferring this to Emergency Management because it's just gonna be easier to track that way and get those funds out of the budgets with the day-to-day janitorial supplies. Um, and move it there to be, um, like I said, tracked more easily for when we have to ask for those reimbursements from FEMA. So, you'll see that overall addition to the Office of Emergency Management uh, as of November twenty-third was an additional two hundred eight thousand seven hundred twelve dollars. On page four, or sorry, three, uh, fifteen thousand dollar decrease in Parks and Recreation Programs, um, again, was a part of the transfer to O E M. And I don't have any additional changes to the C I P at this time, so that concludes the proposals, uh, to changes in the operating budget, Madam President.
Thank you. Um, does any of the council members have any questions? We'll start off with Councilman Les.
Thank you, Madam President. Uh, Michelle, as I understand it, reading through what's eligible for reimbursement through CARES, we cannot recover the loss in amusement tax revenue. Is that correct?
That is correct. It cannot offset loss of, of any revenue now.
Yeah, that's correct. I went, did a lot of digging to finally figure that out, because they don't make it real clear. So, we are being reimbursed for some things. Uh, and we have some pending applications in also. Didn't we just, didn't we just uh, have a deadline for this month? That we, we wanna, okay, all right.
There was a deadline, there was a deadline just yesterday.
Yeah.
Another one uh, last week, two weeks ago.
Okay, so that's gonna be a moving target.
Right, where, I mean, yeah. The end will be that million point five seven.
Excellent. Okay, now the last thing has to do with, uh, I'm watching real closely through a friend of mine who's a, an appraiser, what's happening with the sales prices of essentially uh, uh, homeowners property in the City of Laurel. Prices have gone through the ceiling. Uh, I'm sure you're seeing some of that. And that's because of the interest rates being so low to get a loan. Uh, but we're not gonna see any increase in real estate taxes from those properties based on that sales price. We'll probably see a quarterly assessment increase bump to the end of two thousand one. But we're not gonna see any direct impact. And that's covered by the same uh, formula that they use for increasing taxes. Uh, and again, at the same time, we're seeing some decreases in taxes uh, based on commercial. Uh, because we all know, there's a law out there that allows businesses to ask for reassessment based on an empty storefront. So, I don't know what, it, it, it may be a wash, it may be a slight increase in real estate taxes, but it's not gonna be, uh, uh, it's not gonna redeem uh, uh, the decreases we're seeing in uh, uh, some of the other revenue streams. I wanna thank you for, I mean, I dug, I, I, I dug through this and I wanna thank you for the other figures you gave me. Uh, the um, uh, my committee will be discussing those uh, tomorrow morning, okay? And that's gonna be helpful. But again, these are moving targets and it's important for the city to stay on top of it. And I appreciate yourself and the administration uh, for keeping, keeping their thumb on that, on that number. Thank you. Thank you, Madam President.
Okay. Councilman DeWalt?
Uh, no ma'am, no questions.
Councilman Smith?
Thank you, Madam President. I, I have no comment or question.
Councilman Signor?
No questions or comments?
Okay. Introduction and first public hearing at the next mayor and city council meeting will be on Monday, December fourteenth, twenty twenty at six P M. Our next agenda item is Resolution number eighteen dash twenty. A resolution of the Mayor and City Council to establish the City of Laurel, Marcus Colbert Outstanding Citizenship Award. Mayor Mo?
Madam President, uh, before I go to that, I do wanna make one comment. Uh, we are trying to keep, uh, you all abreast of the changes within the operating budget, because as I have said before, we usually see that twelve to eighteen months. You can start seeing some trends already. Uh, I do wanna note as well, uh, although real estate might be hot, we're seeing a lot of foreclosures um, still. So, um, you know, these people that don't have jobs or have lost their jobs, so we continue to see, see that as well. Um, Madam President, the um, Resolution eighteen dash twenty um, is a resolution for the Mayor and City Council to establish the City of Laurel Marcus Colbert Outstanding Citizenship Award. Um, this would be an annual award. It would be, uh, once adopted by the Mayor and Council, would be the highest award that would be bestowed upon an individual uh, in the City of Laurel. Um, it is um, something we've been thinking about for a long time. I had the opportunity to talk to um, Ralph, the other day, Marcus's father, who was very appreciative uh, of this. This would basically authorize this award, um, formally by the council uh, as the Marcus Colbert Outstanding Citizenship Award. Um, it would allow, uh, my office to move forward with the recognition of setting that up, the, the program, which would entail uh, the award name which you, you would adopt. It would have a little bit of history of the award. It would have the award summary. It would have eligibility. It would uh, have the nominations on how nominations are done, a criteria for selection of the award. Um, it would have what the award is. What we'd like to do is, uh, people would uh, receive a plaque, but out in, in the lobby or somewhere in a public place, we would start the Marcus Colbert Outstanding Citizen, uh, Citizenship Award Tree of Life, which would be, uh, show all the different names. Uh, it would acknowledge, it gives the acknowledgement of the uh, the award. We felt that during the end of the year, um, at the uh, holiday party, we could recognize those individuals as well as being um, at the party itself. And it creates a selection committee uh, of what, um, and what their duties would be. Um, on the, it would be ten, up to ten recipients a year annually. If it was, uh, you only got, you know, five or six awards or, um, you know, that would, that would um, suffice, but if you got twelve or so awards or more, the committee would have some, uh, selection committee would have some uh, work to do. We would like to try to get this um, off this year with the selection of twelve uh, individuals. Uh, for this year, it would probably just, um, I think we would ask, um, the Mayor and Council, um, you know, to uh, acknowledge some individuals, maybe even talk to the Historical Society and others that you do not have to be um, living to receive this award. You may be deceased. But it really is for those individuals that have had a high, an impact on the city uh, of Laurel, uh, and you know, it might be um, something that, somebody sees something that occurred years, years ago and wants to nominate that individual. And um, you know, this is one of several things we wanna continue to do, remember and acknowledge the memory of um, of Marcus and um, I'm very happy to submit this to the council. I'll answer any questions you may have.
Okay. Uh, we'll start with Councilman DeWalt.
Uh, so we're not looking at strictly uh, employees, we're looking at citizens too for this award. Is that correct?
Yeah, I have a draft. I did not add to it. Uh, but my draft would be, uh, that I have, would be individuals or businesses who have given back to their community through volunteer service, charitable or civic contributions that have assisted in creating a community that residents are proud to call home or have made the lives of people or community, uh, the community better is kind of what I have in draft. Eligible candidates do not have to live in the city. Um, but they can own a business as well in the city. There may be something there uh, as well, but the business has to be, um, I would think in the corporate limits. And um, but that's kind of the start that I've gotten, uh, Councilman DeWalt, on uh, on this. I also created, um, on the um, the selection committee would be made up of about six members. Um, again, this is all draft. It'd be one council member, there'd be uh, maybe three members of management staff, a member from the Historical Society I thought about, and a member of the business community uh, that would do the, the reading and the work. The appointments would be for three years, because I think that's important when you create a, an award like this, that there is some continuity on why certain things were done, you know, each year. Um, and that's, uh, just like I say, a draft that would be, uh, that we would continue to, to move forward with. My thought this year would be, if the council can adopt it and whether they're interested in suspending the rolls on the fourteenth, we would try to do something for twenty twenty. I think there's probably no other time where some people have impacted the community more than ever this year on some of the things that has been done. And I think it would be an honor and a tribute uh, to Marcus, who always had a smile on his face and was always willing to help people. So, um, we would do that and we'd start that off with twelve. We wouldn't do the selection committee, maybe a small internal committee, but I'd ask, you know, council, the mayor, maybe others, uh, community leaders to, to take a look at that and the criteria, if we can get all that done. But I think this year, more than ever, I think if we can get it up and running, it would be great.
Okay, thank you.
One, one suggestion, you said there's gonna be a, uh, some, some sort of tree of life.
Can you, I didn't hear you, Carl, can you speak up?
Uh, you're gonna, you're gonna have a tree of life with the.
No, I, I went down, I went down in, uh, Dottie's, this was several, before the pandemic, that tells you how long, um. I don't know if you've ever seen, like at the hospital or places where people donate money and do things. I've seen these like nice, there, it's a, forms a big tree and the names would be, you know, Carl DeWalt twenty twenty, you know, and it would say all the different names and down below, uh, you know, on the, the trunk of it. And I like the tree because the roots went out into the community, that's, you know, touches the lives of people, that type of thing. So, just a, an idea, but we would do something like that in City Hall as well.
One of the, just a little suggestion on that, if you would, uh, maybe, uh, get the uh, uh, the art, eventually get the Art Council to come up with some sort of tree. I think that would be, uh, really amazing and maybe, uh, do a tree that's a, a Maryland native tree, something to that effect that, uh, we have growing, uh, you know, down along Batuxa River or one of our old trees or something like that. I think the art project with the, uh, Art Council would be, they would love to do something like that.
Yeah, that, that's a good idea. Maybe they could create, once we get the, all the different criteria ready, where they might be able to read that and understand what I'm talking about. And all of us, when we talk about the tree and how it intersects and the roots and, so they might be able to create the actual award that we give an individual. Um, where we're able to copy something like that. But, you know, just, just things that I've, I've thrown around. And like I said, you know, this, I need to go back and talk to Phil. Um, there was one that I saw in there that I thought would work in our area of city government, so. But yeah, that's a good idea. Thank you.
I think it's a great idea.
That's all.
Thank you. Councilman Smith?
Thank you, Madam President. I, I have no questions.
Okay. Councilman Signor?
Yeah, um, gotta just a little pushback on it. I'm sorry to talk to you first, Mayor, but I think the award should be, um, I like the acknowledgement of it, but I think it should go to a city employee. Award, been the highest award for a city employee because he was a uh, uh, what's the proper word to say? And when he was killed in line of duty. I, I understand what you, you're going at it with, uh, acknowledging our citizens that, for the contribution to the city. And that's great as well, but I guess some old school thinking, being a military man, uh, somebody that got hurt in the line of duty um, or injured or killed, that the employees of the city, uh, the award is gonna be named after an employee like that, should go to a city employee for their outstanding services. And like I said, be the highest award of the city, but that year only one person would get that award, you know, continue the other awards. This is, should be just talking. Um, I'm not against this, but you know, if I was like, you know, um, I think something like this should go to a city employee, have a separate committee to acknowledge, uh, citizens for their contribution, business owners of the city as well. Um, I wouldn't vote against it, but you know, I just wanted to say that because I, like, once again, that'd be redundant of, um, um, something like this should be to an employee.
So, we have, um, we have a whole war, awards program already set up at the city level. One of the things, um, uh, that, again, uh, Councilman is on my list is, um, to take a look, to see which one we can rename just for that, for an employee as well. We've done that before and we'd probably do that, um, with that as well. But I thought it was important uh, for the community to be recognized. And there are a lot of people that um, knew and cherished the friendship that, um, Marcus had with them and, and the work that he did in the community. So, but thank, thank you. And, and I'll keep you posted. Uh, we are, I don't know when I would unit myself, but uh, we are looking at that and I'll keep you posted as well.
Okay. Councilman Les?
Yeah, thank you, Madam, uh, President. I, I appreciate the comments of my colleagues. Um, I, you've heard me say before that, uh, I'm an inclusive guy. So, there are many different kinds of awards that are made uh, to citizens in our community and employees. Uh, we've had many have been presented awards uh, named after people in the city at Maryland Municipal League each year. So, i- in this respect, um, I, I'm in favor of what the mayor has suggested. I'm in favor of it being an inclusive type of award that recognizes city staff and or uh, residents from the community, whether it be inside the city or outside the city. And uh, I'm fine with it the way it's presented. Thank you.
Thank you. Introduction and first public hearing at the next mayor and city council meeting on Monday, December fourteenth, twenty twenty at six P M. Our last agenda item is bid recommendation to. Our last agenda item is bid recommendation, Department.
Madam President, I'm sorry. I just wanted to see if there was any appetite from the council. Did they want to suspend the rules on the fourteenth to take action on this? Would be my question.
I would be in favor of suspending the rules.
I'd be in favor of that also, Madam President.
I'm fine with that, Madam President. I'm good with it. No issues with it.
And did any of the council want to co-sponsor this? I mean.
I'd like to co-sponsor.
We're more than happy. I, I'm sorry, I cut somebody off. I didn't.
I said I'd like to co-sponsor, and then Councilman Smith said he'd like to co-sponsor as well.
I'd like to co-sponsor.
Does any, Keith or Carl, do you want to go on there as well or?
I'm not, it don't matter to me. I mean, yeah.
Yeah, we got, there's plenty out there.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, it sounds like maybe we all want to co-sponsor?
Great thing.
I mean, I'm not against it.
No, I'm not.
Put my name on it. I'm not saying don't put my name on it, but you know, I'm not, I'm cool, either way.
I'm, I'm good with it.
Okay, all right. Thank, thank you, Madam President.
Okay, our last agenda item is bid recommendation, Department of Parks and Recreation LED Light Conversion for Fairall Foundry Public Works Complex. Joanne Barg, can you do your presentation, please?
Good evening, Madam President, Mayor, council members. Before you have a memo dated November nineteenth, two thousand and twenty, recommending your approval of funds for the conversion of existing lights to energy-efficient L E D lights at the Fairall Foundry Public Works Facility. Converting to more efficiency lighting will provide both the utility cost savings and improved light levels in all areas of the complex. The conversion of the Fairall Foundry complex is part of the city's sustainability plan. The scope of the work will include all labor, materials, equipment, and skills necessary for the L E D lighting upgrade to fifty-two, twenty-two-by-four fluorescent drop ceiling fixtures, thirty-eight two-tur, two-tube fluorescent fixtures, twenty-eight four-hundred M H high bay gymnasium style fixtures, ten interior exit signs, sixteen exterior wall packet figure fixtures. An additional thirty occupancy centers will be placed on offices and in closets, and all fixtures will have dimmability capable, dimmable, dimmable capabilities, excuse me. All work will meet current electric codes for Prince George's County and the city of Laurel. The department will ride Charles County's contract twenty dash nineteen for on-call electrical services. The city was awarded a forty-five thousand dollar grant from the Maryland Smart Energy Communities Program for this project, and the remaining funding is provided in the current C I P for energy efficient improvements. It is recommended that the mayor and city council award the project to Eastern Sales and Engineering Company Incorporated of Baltimore, Maryland for fifty-four thousand, three hundred and sixty-eight dollars and forty-nine cents. Myself and I believe Mr. Bailey is available if there are any questions.
Okay. Do any of the council members have any questions? We'll start off with Councilman Signor.
No questions or comments, Madam President.
Okay, Councilman DeWalt.
No questions, ma'am.
Councilman Smith.
No questions or comments, Madam President.
Okay, and Councilman Les.
I'm fine with this.
Okay, we will award the bid recommendation for this item at our next mayor and city council meeting that will be held on Monday, December fourteenth, two thousand and twenty at six P M. If there's no other business to come before the council, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.
Good job, Madam President.